Good evening and welcome to the Township of Woolwich Committee of the Hall meeting on April 9th, 2024. We welcome everyone here today and all those who are watching you, watching on YouTube. I will start with a roll call of council. I counsel the grant in present and chairing this meeting. Mayor Shantz?
Present.
Counselor Bryant?
Present.
Counselor Burgess?
Present.
Counselor Cudow?
Present.
And Counselor Schwenk?
Present.
Thank you. We'll move for a public resolution to reconvene in open session. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Bryant, seconded by Counselor Burgess. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. I want to acknowledge the land on which we live has been here from time immemorial and that indigenous people have lived here from time immemorial. I think the Chinatown, also called the Adirondin, the Inishanabe, the Hodenashone people, who have lived here and cared for this land and who continue to share and steward this land with us. May we together learn to care for each other, our flora and fauna, and the land that sustains us. We, do we have any council members have any declarations of community interest for tonight? Seeing none, we do have an item coming forward from closed session. That is the appointments to the Technical Remediation Advisory Committee. Do I have a mover and a seconder for that? Moved by Counselor Cudow, seconded by Mayor Shantz. All those in favor? And that's carried as well. Thank you. Uh, we have no public meetings or presentations, but we do have a delegation as well. This is, uh, we'll start with our comprehensive zoning bylaw review. We have, before us, we have the Township's manager of planning, Jeremy Vink, who will present the report.
Good evening, council. Uh, so you have in front of you a very short document. I'm sure you read it in detail. So, uh, obviously it's the new zoning bylaw and so the new zoning bylaw is to bring us kind of back up the speed with everything that's been going on since 1986. So the previous bylaw, the one that's in place was put in place in 1986. It went through a few amendments here and there and a number of site-specific amendments. Obviously, a lot has changed since 1986 from a provincial policy perspective. Regional official plans and our own official plan finally revised last year in 2022. So now it's time to bring the zoning bylaw back into compliance with all of those. So that's why we're in this step here is trying to bring everything back into alignment and bring them up to pace with where things are today. So, uh, the staff went through a very long process of going through the policies, that, as I mentioned, the provincial policy statement, the regional official plan, the township official plan, and implementing them into the new zoning bylaw. We've also met with various agencies. We've had public open houses. We had a public meeting and compiled everything to get us into a new bylaws in front of you tonight. So, in conjunction with the bylaw, there is two proposed official plan amendments. This is to help us clean up a few little spots, two spots. One is here just down the road on Church Street. It's an area that's still designated, uh, still zoned and designated based on the old farm that was there. So we just want to clean that up. Because the service commercial kind of wraps around the parcel and it doesn't include this little piece. So it's just an awkward piece left behind. So we're proposing to change it from residential ancillary use to service commercial use. And that would allow us to zone it accordingly with to match the parcels right around it. There's also a parcel, a parcel of land in Floridale. It's in behind the Florida mill. It's part of the property. It's been used historically as for commercial purposes, but it's still zoned and been used, uh, still zoned and designated with the agricultural component. So we wish to amend that from the prime agricultural area to core area with the natural hazards overlay to match the front portion of the site. So as I mentioned, this bylaw, zoning bylaw is to bring, brings everything into conformity with our current official plan. So I'm just going to go kind of through the official plan conformity section here with you. That's outlined in the report. Some of the key things you're going to see is all the land use designations are to match those designations in the official plan. So the zoning is going to match those designations as you see in the official plan. Some big changes that have happened to our official plan, obviously, were Breslau Secondary Plan and our Stockyard Secondary Plan. So those were done over the last number of years, but the zoning hasn't caught up with those. So, um, the last one was the Stockyard Secondary Plan that was finally approved late last year by the region. And we're going to implement those zoning, that zoning to this at this point. With respect to housing, a lot of, as you are aware, a lot of things have changed around the housing world in front of us today too. So we're mending our zoning to kind of bring ourselves in line with the housing needs. So we have low, medium, and high density kind of housing oper- zones. And that allows us those mix of housing opportunities within the low, medium, and high density as appropriate. So you'll see more single semis in towns and the low density than just your standard sing- uh, single detached what we would have seen in the past. Also, we've, as you know, we have in a few years ago, allowed the accessory dwelling units. We're making some minor modifications to those based on what we've seen in the last few years, just to make some minor modifications, make it a little bit better and easier, more easily to implement, uh, with the regulations. All this will give us a greater mix of housing within our urban areas and give opportunity for new, new residential units and maybe some additional affordability. Uh, it also aligns with the regional official plan and our official plan in terms of providing the opportunity for missing, what is called the missing middle. So those are the types of housing that we currently don't have in our zoning bylaw, which is the stacked townhouses, uh, the back-to-back townhouses, those kinds of things. They're, they were not in our current 1986 bylaw, obviously, because they didn't exist back then. So we've brought them into our new bylaw and allow for them. Uh, all this will also support the 15-minute communities as proposed, as put in the regional official plan. So allows us to implement greater density, which helps supports walkability and employment areas, is also supports transit. And, uh, just adding, putting those things in the urban areas and giving that intensification. Some of the climate action issues that were put in, uh, obviously we have some climate action elements in our official plan that flow from the regional plan. So we've input in regulations around electric vehicle charging stations or having them ready. Uh, added some bicycle parking requirements to encourage people to use bicycle parking. So we're making, uh, commercial operations in the urban areas to add bicycle parking so people can come bike. Uh, we've introduced new regulations around green roofs and urban agriculture that didn't exist before. And we're added in regulations around the maximum pervious surface for residential neighborhoods. Just to explain that, we don't have anything along those lines really currently. But what we're seeing is as lots get smaller and people are developing their parcels with more and more hard surfaces such as backyard patios, driveways and spanning walkways, there's less impervious surfaces and it's putting a greater strain on our stormwater system. So we have to try balance out that we don't lose all that impervious surface and overload our stormwater management system. So we're maintaining a minimum amount of what's pervious to impervious. Just moving along again to, uh, the environmental features and hazard lands. You will note, um, we did have some of the elements in our zoning bylaw in the urban areas. We addressed the flood zones in the past. And Elmar had a two-zone flood section where we've done some additional analysis. But the environmental zones weren't noted in the agricultural zones, for example, in order they address the woodlots and wetlands, uh, elements along those lines. But they are in our official plan and the regional plan to be protected and, and address that appropriate development happens in those areas. So we are adding them into the zoning bylaw or an overlay. So this underlying zone is a residential or agricultural or whatever it is. And this is an overlay to identify that there's additional regulations that would apply. Generally speaking, all these regulations already exist because there are GRCA regulations. So there's GRCA mapping that map. We're just taking the GRCA mapping and reflecting it in our zoning bylaw. So when somebody now would look at our zoning bylaw, they would understand that the property is regulated and they understand when they purchase a property, they're a little more aware of what they might be purchasing than what they would have seen in their current bylaw. So somebody comes in and buys a property and saw an agricultural zone and thought they could do whatever they wanted. Then they came in, we said building permit, we'd say, oh, you need to go to the GRCA. They wouldn't have known necessarily from our zoning. That will, this will correct that. So they'll now be aware that there's a GRCA regulation on that and they'll know in advance that there's an issue there. So we're making it all consistent. So we have the red, the buffer areas, the flood zones and the slow, uh, slope erosions. All that, as I mentioned, comes straight from the GRCA's mapping and just input into our mapping, just to make people aware. Uh, just one section here, uh, as you recall, the public meeting, we did have someone come out worried about the O2 zone that was originally proposed on the woodlots. Uh, staff did go and review that and we met with the region and the GRCA and talked about this a little more about what the appropriate approach was. Uh, we went back to using the agricultural zone with an overlay versus the O2 zone as. And this is still consistent with our official plan. So the underlying zoning is agricultural. The overlay just identifies as a core feature, a natural area that needs to be protected. And there may be some, uh, elements that are preventing development in some cases, which would exist anyway. It doesn't go as far as the region would like it to. It's not inconsistent with our policies, but it's not as far as the region would like it to. And the region might be looking at some additional policy wording changes in our future official plan. That could be implemented in future zonings to make it more restrictive, but that's something we'll address in a future official plan amendment. So it does identify it on the mapping then that these are core features and that areas that would be looked at, uh, as an overlay. Uh, another overlay is the environmentally sensitive lands on the far westerly edge of the township. There's some environmentally sensitive lands. They're identified in our plans and the region wants to maintain that identification because they are very sensitive to the, there's, they're the identified sensitive areas for the Laurel Creek headwaters. So we want to make sure those are protected and preserved. So there's not any development on there that would impact that. Tied with that is source water protection. So we do have source water protection policies in the regional plan and the township's official plan. We'll be implementing those and showing them on our zoning bylaw. And then within those source water protection areas, certain land uses wouldn't be permitted that might contaminate groundwater. So that's consistent with the policies that are in place currently in the regional plan and the township's official plan. Uh, we'll identify again here, the Grand River Source Water Protection Area policies are, have to be, uh, their policies are slightly different and have to be changed and implemented in the regional plan to follow into ours. So in the future, we will see more restrictions come down because they're coming from the Grand River Protection Policy Area. Uh, in terms of the agricultural zone, so we've made, did take a look at the agricultural zone and adjusted some things there. So some of the key things you will notice that we added is the farm labor residence. Often we've tweaked it, called it sometimes the bunk houses, but they're farm labor residences. And we put in regulations that would allow them, uh, we would allow one unit, uh, with up to 20 people living on it, in it, uh, on a property over 20 hectares. So that would start to allow for these, uh, types of uses to take place. For the on-farm business regulations, we made some minor modifications. We took a lot of, there is some, some uses that we only allowed at 1% lot coverage. We've kind of given them 2% lot coverages and kind of leveled out the playing field for some things. In addition, we added in, uh, the opportunity for small-scale restaurants within the on-farm diversified uses. Uh, some additional flexibility around the agritourism side. And then just reduce some setbacks for the small farm produce stands from the neighboring residences. So made some minor tweaks there just to make things a little bit easier for some of the on-farm diversified uses and open things up slightly. And just harmonizing a little more with our value-added, uh, uses that were already in place. The cultural heritage landscape. So we do have one cultural heritage landscape at this point in time in Westmont Rose. It is identified again in our policies and we're going to show that in our zoning bylaw as an overlay again to note that this is an area where development, new development is subject to specific regulations and policies to protect that nature of that heritage feat, those features. Overall, the new zoning bylaw in front of you, we tried to take it and make it a little bit easier to use. Uh, as part of making it a bit easier to use, we took all the policies, uh, all the regulations around parking and transportation and put them in one chapter. A lot of site plan issues, a lot of the app, the consultants are trying to find that and it's always buried in chapter six is a little hidden for them in the current bylaw. It's nice. Now they're going to have it in one spot to look. So they'll know right away. Yep, this is the chapter I need to look at for parking and transportation requirements. The overlay zones, as I noted, we went through a bunch of them. They're all going to be provided in the overlay section and back of the, of the back of the bylaw. So they'll be clearly identified and can overlay. Uh, the site-specific provisions were updated. So there was 300 and some odd site-specific provisions. John went through each one meticulously and checked if it needed to be retained, what needed, was no longer applicable because we're maybe giving them additional regulations and that was giving them more than what the site specific gave them. So we've updated all of those and brought it to where it needs to be. Uh, and we identified that to landowners where that was changing. So they were aware. So that, that's all going to put in place. We have a few less slightly site-specifics, provisions now because we're able to reduce a bunch. They were all captured in the new bylaw as permitted versus being site-specific. We updated our mapping in illustration section. So we wanted to give some more illustrations about explaining what certain, certain things meant. But also updating our mapping because our mapping was getting very small and hard to read on the eight and a half by 11. So we utilized our GIS system. We created a better mapping. So there's more maps, but it's easier to read and it's more simplified as best we can to make it visually, uh, just visually more appealing to see and understand. That will also go online, by the way, once everything's approved. Uh, some of the other zoning amendments, you will notice that we combined certain land uses into the chapters. So all the residential land use regulations are in one chapter, same with the commercial and the mixed use. And then we did a table format so that people can go down and find the use they're looking for and find out which zone it applies to. This made it a whole lot easier because sometimes people were looking where they could run, let's say, a retail store, but had to flip through 10 different zones and 20 different pages. And we're never sure if they were allowed to do it in which zone. This makes it a little bit easier just to read across a table. A little more consistent that way. We also updated the, the zoning for some taller buildings in the C1 zone, which was consistent with what was put into our official plan. But also the downtown Elmar core area design study that was done. It suggested that we should be going to the eight stories. So we were implementing that, which was the recommendation that came out of that study. Other items we added in the airport with an airport zone. Similar to, to the understanding around the conservation authority items like the natural hazards. It's there to identify to people that the airport exists. So the people around it know the airport exists and what might take place. But it's also implements and just tells people what kind of uses are going to take place. And we did meet with the airport and reviewed everything. They're satisfied at the moment. They're not generally restricted by our zoning bylaw because they're federally regulated, but, it just doesn't, does make it clear what kind of uses might happen in and around the airport that are just a bit outside of the general aviation elements. Uh, there are a few deferrals in the bylaw that are being addressed. There were some things that came out of, that we had in our official plan that were awaiting approvals from, when the region updated their plan. We are just waiting for regional council to approve those deferrals so we can address them formally in our zoning bylaws. So we're trying to match those up. So there's a few deferrals. You'll note that we're waiting for that. Hopefully the region's going to approve these OPAs for us and we can just put them in the bylaw and get rid of the deferral portion. Um, but we're just trying to make, get it ready so that we can do that. Just moving along, there are various agency comments, as I noted. We did meet with the region, the GRCA, uh, specifically, those are the bigger ones we met with to go through their various issues. When we talked to region, we were talking regional economic development, regional airport and regional planning staff. We did meet with various public and property owners as needed, uh, to go over some of their issues or concerns. There in the appendices, you will kind of see the list of people we talked to and questions and back and forth conversations and how we tried to address comments. Lastly, just kind of the next steps is hopefully that we're able that council approves this later on and we'll start the 20-day appeal period process. And hopefully nobody appeals anything and then we're good to go and it's going to be, it's put into place. If there is an appeal, there is some processes and transition policies put into place that would address how we would handle things. There is transition policies in general because there's some things that are in the works right now where we've given people and we're working with them that if we were to transition and say the new bylaw is more restrictive, that wouldn't be fair. So there's transition policies that we're working through somebody right now that they wouldn't lose something in this current point of process. For example, if they're going through a minor variance or something like that. So we do have transition policies. Our lawyer has reviewed all that and is satisfied that the policies are appropriate. Lastly, just kind of going through here, just in the terms of the conclusion, you have in front of you the recommendation to adopt the OPA and zoning, the, to adopt the OPA for those two items I noted in the beginning for the Church Street in Floridale. So that we can send them off to the region and get those, the zoning to match. You do have the recommendation to adopt the new bylaw and repeal the existing because we're going to replace. So it's going to get rid of the old and give us the new. Um, as part of that, I just want to note when you, as we bring the new bylaw back to you for formal approval, you will have in the new bylaw, the mapping and zoning for Mad West. So Mad West subdivision that was approved by council at the end of 2023 in December now has regional draft plan approval, which means we can put the zoning in place. So it was, uh, just the pro, simple that we could just tie it into the new zoning bylaw and put it in. So when you see the final bylaw, it will actually have the Mad West zoning in it with the mapping appropriately. It's not there today because it was just approved and we're trying to move it into the process. Uh, so you have in front of you that those recommendations also because we did go through some back and forth with different parties, especially the region and the GRCA. There's been some minor modifications since the public meeting, especially around the O2 zone and the agricultural zone and that overlay. Staff is just noting that those changes are appropriate, consistent and don't require another public meeting and just want council to endorse that another public meeting is not required. As I noted, there are various appendices attached that outline, that outline the, the official plan, but also those chapters, like what changes have been made to which properties. Many cases, it's just in alignment, uh, for appendix, uh, number seven, for example. Most of those are alignments of zoning to the official plan boundaries. So they're trying to line those things up. So the zoning matches the boundaries of the official plan or the zone and the commercials matches the commercial area and the residential matches the residential area. There's some spots they didn't always match up properly. We're just trying to get those to match correctly. And then the rest of the comments that you see in some of the other attachments, matrix about what, how we addressed certain elements, the new zoning classification, what, what zone? If it was an R2, what it became, did it become an R2 or a new zone? Just so people understood what the new changes were. The conversations with the GRCA and the region are implemented in there. And then appendix number four kind of outlines chapter by chapter, some of the changes that took place. And you can go through those. If there's anything, you probably went through those and went through them. I will highlight one other, a few other minor changes that are highlighted there more so than in the report is that in the general provisions, we did add some regulations around site triangles for driveways. We did make some minor modifications to the home business tradesperson definition to allow some flexibility there, which is helping some of the farm agricultural parcels. We did put in policies now to clarify occasional uses where they were interpreted in the past. When we're getting some actual firm clarification in the bylaw behind that. So it's not an interpretation that, aligning some of the zoning regulations with our infrastructures, uh, engineering and design manual. As I noted, the bicycle parking and the e-electric vehicle charging stations were some of the ones. And then just as I noted, we've added in a lot of those new residential units, uh, the back-to-backs, the stacks. And then some mixed-use commercial zones, which didn't exist really previously. We didn't call them mixed-use. But, uh, adding in those opportunities that we're going to start seeing in some of our areas, especially Breslau had some areas that had mixed-use zones already. So essentially that is it. That's in front of you tonight. Staff is here to answer any questions. As we understand, it is a lengthy amount of documentation we gave to you tonight. Here to answer any of the questions, we can try as best we can. And then we do have one delegation tonight. So given the amount of work and amount of effort, I want to applaud John for this because if you only have one delegation on this major amount of work, I'm impressed by it. So.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions for Mr. Vink? Counselor Bryant?
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Vink. Parking, do we set the regulations for how many parking spots when they're developing? Or is that something that's done in the provincial policy statement or official plan? Where, where does that come from?
So, uh, through the chair to Counselor Bryant. So that is something we set and that goes into our zoning bylaw. This goes in the, this chapter on transportation and the parking requirements. Generally speaking, we look, we look at other municipalities and we look at what works. And we'll set the standard accordingly. So, um, we tend to look more at the rural townships a little bit more around us somewhat than the urban areas because the urban areas have more transit. So we realize we are trying to be cautious that we do need to maintain a higher, slightly higher level of track, of parking requirements than maybe an urban area like Waterloo or Kitchener.
Okay, can, um, the reason I'm asking is I know with all the development we've got going forward, you're designating, what is it? One, one and a half parking spaces per household, I believe it is, or per unit if it's an apartment, something like that? Am I correct in that number? Or am I?
It's one, it's 1.1.
Okay. And I, I've had a lot of people question if that number should not be higher because when you live in these rural type communities, we don't always have the public transit. And we're looking at cars being parked on the streets. People are fighting with each other because there's cars basically blocking their driveways. They're so tight on either side. They can barely get in and out. And I really question if we should be looking at those parking numbers.
To the, to the chair to Counselor Bryant. So 1.1, so I should clarify because we got lots of now housing going on. So lots of different houses. 1.1 is the group multiple housing. So it's not the apartment buildings. Apartment buildings are still at a higher rate, uh, 1.5. So we still have, and that's consistent what we've had for years. So that hasn't changed since 1986, actually. So that's the, the standard that we've been maintaining. I, I can tell you, we've been, like I said, we've been cautious. We've had some agencies and some, like the region has told us, uh, through like affordable housing and things, things along those lines that our rates are too high. Because they think they should be lower for, especially for affordable housing units or any mix. They think they're a little high. So we, on the other hand, are still conservative, being a little more conservative.
Are there any other questions? Uh, Counselor Burgess?
Through you, Chair, to staff. Um, yeah, thanks for all the hard work on this. That was a long document. Just want to touch on a couple of things if I may. Just clarity on GRCA. I appreciate we're doing the overlay now for mapping. So residents can be informed on stuff that might arise on their property, but just wanted to confirm we're not giving them more authority or jurisdiction on approvals or permits or anything like that. We're more just, yeah.
So yes, through Counselor, through the chair, to, uh, Counselor Burgess. So, you know, we're not giving them any more authority. It's basically they have, their authority doesn't change. It just makes it more clear that that regulation will apply and they can, somebody can see that when looking for, at a property, understanding where the limits might be. They can look at our zoning to see it. So it doesn't give the GRCA any additional powers, uh, really. So, um, it just puts it in our bylaw, makes it more clear.
Yeah, I was going to say Counselor Schwenk maybe has a follow-up question, then we can go back to Counselor Burgess.
I didn't know that one as well because that was my question. If there's an overlay area, who has final decision-making if landowner commits his GRCA, yep, build that house there because it's on stilts. Does the township still have to agree to? So is it dual approval or is it still just one?
Through to the chair. So the zoning does have regulations that says what can and can't happen. So some of the policy, what we're implementing is a policy framework that exists from the provincial level and the conservation authority and ours that says certain areas you can't build, like floodplains, you just can't. We don't want you to build in the floodplain and put yourself at risk from a residential side, right? Uh, doesn't mean certain commercial in our downtown, for example, can't go in some, some flood areas. Ultimately, you will see that our zoning bylaw does reference and meant, and most of them that the GRCA can look at and review the line and they can adjust and we will follow that. Okay? So sometimes there are detailed analysis, there might be some adjustment on the fine tune of the line and we would follow the GRCA's lead. Uh, but essentially the policies near each other, uh, from the GRCA perspective and ours. So they wouldn't be, uh, one superseding the other necessarily. We're going to follow the appropriate mapping and the expertise that is there. Is that, I, I, is that answering your question? I'm not giving them more rules, regulations, but there is some rules they do, will have to follow. But the GRCA will be the lead because there might be some modifications to that line. There's some flexibility sometimes that, based on a site-by-site review.
Exactly. So I'm concerned those site-by-site reviews that all of a sudden we're going to have two different organizations making a judgment call. So, and who should have finals?
Yeah. So through the chair. So the final decision on that is the GRCA because they are the experts. They, they have the expertise in that realm of floodlines and, or the environmental elements. So they will be the third, the bylaws written that they have the call. They make the judgment call.
Thank you. Counselor Burgess?
Thanks through your chair. I'm jumping a bit ahead on this question. But, uh, with these zoning changes, have we already implemented and reviewed the stipulations for CMHC and the half funding? To make sure we qualify for all that or without be some more amendments coming down the pipeline?
Through the chair again to Counselor Burgess. So when we drafted our bylaw, we didn't know about the half funding coming, but that's fine. Uh, when the half funding came and they did meet with us and talk about this, you'll see in some of the cities, they required the cities, other locations, you had to have every property allow up to four units, basically. And they weren't going to get the funding unless they changed their bylaw. Kitchener had to do that. Waterloo did that. Other cities had to, if they wanted it, they had to put, do that. Uh, we met, obviously they were meeting with us and we did talk to them and say, look, we're not a city. You can't treat a rural area like a city. So we said, we have areas that are on private services or mixed services. So we can't allow every property have four units. It's just not an appropriate approach. And they understood that. And then we told them what we're doing in our zoning bylaw and what we'd already planned with the, what's planned in our bylaw and what's in front of you tonight. And they, that would allow additional units on What's planned in our bylaw and what's in front of you tonight. And they, that would allow additional units on within serviced areas. And that met their requirements. So they are satisfied. What we actually have to do is pass this bylaw and that makes. Uh, things work for our half funding essentially. So we need this as part of our half funding. That's the approval. We don't, we're not anticipating any. Major changes as a result of the half funding. No.
So just to follow up to that, if we do have to make an amendment later on due to that, or agricultural enforcement or other areas like that, how complicated or simple is that to kind of make a small amendment?
So, uh. Essentially, any amendment is a general amendment is like a zoning process, like we put, anyone else has to go through. We would annual, do them generally on an annual basis, uh, to do general amendments, because there's always something that comes up and there's always some changes that you want to make or minor tweaks you to find out after the fact, or. This as you go along, that something has changed out there that you might need to modify. One way or the other. So generally we would do, we go through a general amendment once a year and address all those kind of items. And just like any other, anyone else, we go through this kind of process, just in a bit of a shorter period of time. And we, obviously we don't have to bind ourselves to ninety days. Like we would do for, uh, anyone else making an application, but we'd probably do it. Within the span of a few months, uh, with your type, by the time you go through the public process, uh, public meetings and some recommendation, the council will be a few months for sure.
Councillor Burgess and then, or do you want to seed the Florida?
I can let him do it and then I'll. My question stems from that. Maybe I'll just hop in here. Um, you mentioned the potential of an annual review. Is there anything that we could build in to make a more comprehensive review happen on a more regular basis? So we're not in a situation where we're updating for thirty five plus years?
Excellent question. So through the chair to councillor Cudow. What should happen is that every time you do an update to your official plan, a significant update, you should be updating your zoning bylaw. So essentially you should be doing updates, good reviews every five to ten years, depending on how substantial you did to your official plan. So you should be aligning those up appropriately. So what you just saw was we did an official plan in twenty twenty two, the zoning is catching up. So the two should always follow each other. Uh, and then every so often you might do a major redo. Uh, so this was a major redo was probably long over, slightly overdue. But, uh, we would be doing some major ones every so often and. You start to understand how far off you are if you need to do a major rewrite. So, but like I said, you do some more significant ones when you see that after you do an official plan update, if you might do a major update to your bylaw.
Thank you. Councillor Burgess, did you have more questions?
Sure. Yeah, one more. Thanks. Um, through your chair, um, as can be seen on this report, um, one of the changes we made to the original. Zoning amendments we're going to make was removing the sixty percent hard limit for patio use. Many businesses had success during COVID using these patios and would like to continue this. And I appreciate this change, but one area I'm still concerned about is for the micro breweries where it states. It's a bit long here, but I'll read it. They may include accessory sales of these beverage products, the public within the manufacturer's store on the premise and or hospitality area. Provided that the combined gross floor area of the accessory retail sales and hospitality lounged area. Including any outdoor lounge patio does not exceed the gross floor area of the manufacturing floor area. So that's a lot of words to say. They're limited in their patio hos- and hospitality space to the amount of their manufacturing floor space. And we have a lot of, we have a few micro breweries in the Woods Township that I think are niche and well supported by the local community. And I. Manufacturing space in these areas, they're not that large, so it really limit what they would be able to do for patio or just. Where people can sit. Um, so I would just suggest to council and staff that. We either look at amending this or removing this, just to remove another barrier for local businesses. If anyone has comments.
I think Mr. Vink does.
Uh, through the chair to councillor Burgess, uh. I guess there wasn't really a question. I mean, it's to staff in that one, but, um, just to explain to council why it was input that way is, um. It, a micro brewery is an industrial use. So it's similar to any industrial operation in an industrial area. We're going to say this is the main use. That's what it is. The uses accessory to it are small scale, because the main use is the more prominent, right? By floor areas, basically the only way we can. We address them. That's consistent with, in zoning, we use the floor areas. So we're trying to say the main use of a micro brewery is the micro brewery, not the restaurant or the, the, the tasting space. Um, and many of our zones where they're permitted, they could often allow a restaurant. As a permitted use. So if somebody wanted to, they could run a restaurant, uh, as well as the micro brewery. But if you're a micro brewery, we're trying to state it, it's, it's an industrial use. So this is what it is. That's the nature of it. If you want to run something else, then run a restaurant or run something else and call it what something else is. So that's what we're trying to limit the size of the accessory uses relative to the main use. And we do the same sort of thing. If you look at the industrial zones, we say. This is the industrial building. This is the industrial operation. But you may do some limited retail sales. Of what the things you manufacture on site. And it's only fifteen percent generally, because the main use is the industrial. We don't want someone to run a commercial business and just, and ruin our industrial area. So. The nature of that definition is basically, like I said. We're trying to identify it as an industrial use and that's what the, what it is not a commercial or restaurant use and doesn't prohibit somebody from looking at if they wanted to run a restaurant separately. But if council's direction is to alter the definition. And it's in the definition section where councillor Burgess is reading from, to remove that portion of the scale that's up to the council's direction, but just to explain where that came from.
Thank you. Is there any other questions, councillor? Councillor Swin? Yeah, okay.
My turn, I guess. I'd support councillor Burgess's recommendation. There are some sort of a tweaking. Um, but I want to move over to the bunk houses and secondary residences. Um, and not as informed as should be, but are the bunk houses. Defined as where they need to be in terms of location on the property. Um, I'm thinking of a farm that's owner occupied, but wants to have a bunk house as well. I can see. The position, we will bear everything together, but realistically you want separation, living in a rural, rural area spaces, your asset, you want to use it. So. We're looking to force bunk houses and residences together, or we're allowing separation on the property. It's question one.
Uh, through the chair to councillor Swin. So, uh, consistent with the provincial guidelines and the policies, we're supposed to cluster uses on farms. Um, so bunk houses on farm diversified uses, the residential, the barns are all clustered. So we do have regulations around clustering. So it doesn't mean they have to be right beside each other, but we are setting kind of a distance from me, from other buildings. So they can be. Up to thirty meters from another building on the cluster. So they're in a general proximity to each other, but they don't have to be attached or right next to each other. But we are required by the guidelines to be clustering them.
Okay. I can find other concern with that, um. Because of what I said before, we want to separate residences where possible and. We encourage large farm parcels on a hundred acres, or maybe appropriate, have two clusters. Just based on natural features of that particular area. So more flexibility would make sense to me on that one. The other, okay.
Director Freeze?
Sorry, if I could just respond to that, um, I would also caution council to consider that on one-off situations or unique situations, the minor variance process is in place. To deal with those individual applications. The, um. A zoning bylaw is trying to deal with the majority of situations.
I understand. I just not convinced that policy makes sense to me that. The clustering is important to us as a township. And then also questioning on secondary residences on a property. Um. I know that's a big political hot pedal. In urban areas, we kind of want to have more dense. Uh, usage. Are we going to allow secondary? Residences on farm properties, um, if not, why not?
So through, through the chair again, actually our current zoning bylaw and the proposed by, zoning bylaw allow for a bit of variety in the other units. So they, uh, farms are allowed the ADUs. So they could have up to the accessory dwelling units. So they have that opportunity, just like the urban area. So they could have one detached and. Or one detached, one in the house, or they could have two in the house. So they do have that flexibility. They're not large, but they do have that. We also allow the dotty houses, uh, which is a large house that looks like one. So there's that flexibility with the two units. Um, and then we do on the larger farm parcels, allow the second one, second unit for farm help. So. There's a lot of variety of opportunities actually on the farms to support farming and have the second unit to help. Generally, the reason they're there is to help the farm kind of that, have family stay and help work on the farm or transition the farm. So there is a lot of opportunity. Um, we haven't had any problems in the last number of years because people have that flexibility. So no one's concerned about wanting. More units because there, there's opportunity here already in the bylaw.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, councillor Burgess?
Uh, through you, chair, just following up on the ADU quick. Um, I know I've had a member talk to me in the past and I'm not sure where it landed for this policy, but is there a? Height restriction in basements or was that removed? For ADUs separated?
So the, the, it was removed. It, it, this is more, it's a building code question. So we did have it originally in the old bylaw. Um, prior to us implementing the ADUs, there was a restriction that you couldn't basically have living space if you didn't have the height and, and it couldn't have living space in a basement, a separate unit. When we did the ADUs and introduced them a few years ago, we changed that regulation. So we didn't, we took that away. So we could allow the accessory dwelling units in the basement. So that opened it up. So that's gone from the bylaws and the, not in the current bylaw any longer. And it's not in the new bylaw at all, but it's not, there's no reason for it. We're going to focus, that's all building code requirements about appropriate heights and egress. So we leave that to the code.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Mayor Shons?
Thank you, um. Big document. Lots of work went into this. Um, I just have a, I have a couple of questions. The first one, um. I think I'm going to go back to what councillor Bryant started with the parking. And, um, my question is. Why are we using one point one? For, I think he said it was for towns, town homes, um, if we've got one point five for apartments. Um, I, I'm just concerned, we really don't have that much transit here.
The, the one point one is for group multiple housing developments. So if you have a large block like Mad West had where they had. Uh, mixed use, they had, uh, row townhouses within this one block. They had apartments in it. It was like an average, uh, 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 parking requirement. Because row townhouses, or there could be even singles and semis within this block condo development. Uh, so it was a blending of it. If you had a site specific, uh, um. Uh, stacked townhouse or apartments, then, then the parking threshold is hu- is higher, which is the one point five. That one point one was a blended and that was, uh, something that was approved in, actually in the Mad West. Uh, so that was, uh. Using that sort of, uh, standard, uh, for those blended, uh, um. Block developments that have a, a variety of housing types in it.
So, so just to push on that a little bit, um, because I, we don't have that much transit and Mad West is Breslau right now. We've got. Next, no transit in Breslau, just the, the one bus, um. Is that enough? I know that, I, I know that you're, you're talking about how the cities have, have, um. Have done it and, and so on, but is that enough for us here?
So through the chair to the mayor. Um, maybe an interesting way to look at this and. May not help, and you may not like the answer. Um. A single detached dwelling. Requires one parking space. It's a required that they provide one parking space. Um, so when we blend it on a group multiple housing, we're actually asking a little bit more than the one parking space. Uh, realizing that they're not going to have the driveway space, that not all of them will have the driveway space. We're actually making sure they blend it and give us some additional parking beyond the typical one per household. So we're actually getting a little, I wouldn't say a little bit higher, but we're making sure we're accommodating some additional parking within that block. Then you would say. Is required on the typical single family or, or typical semi. So just to note that blending is there that makes sure we get some additional parking to try alleviate that we have. Don't have a ton of problems with things. So we're trying to blend that to make it work.
So visitors would park on a street, uh, somewhere or?
So they could, just like in a residential area, like if somebody's visiting somebody or they, because of the one point one, they might have a designated visitor parking areas. They might have designated parked spots that people can purchase. Let's say in a condo that they can say, yeah, I'm going to rent this space, but they would also have some visitor parking spaces, uh. And that, and they'd have internal road networks that they'd probably be parking on too. So. It's a bit of a different, and that's what we're saying, is blending it to make sure there's parking and then there's other opportunities on the streets, internal and external to their site.
Okay. I think, uh, councillor Bryant maybe had something to tack on to that.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
If the mayor's. Yeah, I was just gonna ask something else.
Yeah.
Um, thank you. I think this is, the one point one number is just unrealistic for Breslau. I look at these. Homes that are already existing. Nobody has one car. They're all sitting there with two children that drive. Some of them have four cars. There's cars all over the streets currently through Riverland and there's a lot of neighbors fighting with other neighbors because of the parking situation. Mad West, I think, is going to be even worse. And I really am concerned with the parking numbers. I think they need to be higher than one point one. That's my thought on the whole process.
Um, I will probably go back to Mayor Shons before going to councillor Cudow.
Sure. Um, my second question is about. How we ensure that, that, um. New builds fit into existing neighborhoods, for example, and, and we've, we've talked about height. Um, we're, we're now specifically. Um, talking about eight stories in the downtown and I, I know that there's, um. There, there's different places where there, there really is no restriction. So. How are you going to ensure that, uh, whatever we build as we densify, if that's the word. Um, fit into existing neighborhoods? Whether it's downtown or elsewhere.
Uh, so through the chair of the mayor, definitely another good question with our changes that we've went through. So we've had the intensification strategy that was presented by our. Planning consultants that are working on our official plan. We've had the core area study, the urban design that recommended the eight stories in Almira. Um, our official plan leads that way to the height of about eight stories. Um, so a number of our current zones, just to back things up, so just for council's reference, number of our current zones, especially our apartment zones today, don't have a height restriction. There is no height restriction. There is no max. So we're now introducing in some zones, max heights that weren't there today. So we will be basically making sure they don't get taller or wouldn't be taller. Um, so the eight is something we've been seeing as that came, like I mentioned, came out of the core area. It is a hu- a height that is not obviously your urban area, your cities, like where they're talking fifty, sixty, twenty story buildings. But we're trying to get some intensification that supports transit, the walkability to the fifteen minute community. But not take away from our community. So that comes back to them and comes back to the mayor's question appropriately, is how does that fit? So in the downtown, for example, the C one zone, we're saying in Almira and St. Jacobs, uh, for the new C one zone would allow the eight stories, for example. Is, there's also a requirement that, that after four, they have to start stepping back. So. The mass of the building starts to step back. So you don't notice it that, you know. It is maybe ten, it may be eight stories, sorry, eight stories, but after four, it's starting to angle back and you don't see those top stories. Um, you know, staff is. At the question came up and we've been looking at a lot of different municipalities all around and we're starting to see some intensification, a lot of smaller communities. And we're trying to find some good examples to show you. And some do happen, uh, there are four, five, six stories. We're not saying everything is going to go to eight. Um, if you realize, like I said, we had provisions and nobody went high, uh, even when they had no restriction. You're going to see slow transitions here and there that will hopefully fit in. Um, we'll work with them on the design and the approach of that. Uh. Tied with that. Um, I just lost my train of thought there for a moment. Sorry. Um. So tied that way, we're going to try work with them on the exterior to make it work, uh, to make it fit in better. But one of the things they also have to address on every site is just because you could under zoning, doesn't mean you. You have the height, doesn't mean you're going to have, be able to dress all the other items. So they may be restricted. They can't go as high because they don't have the parking. Or the footprint area to do that, or the landscaping spaces and everything to work on the site. So they may not be able to get eight stories just because their site's not big enough. To allow something like that to happen. So. You'll see them generally slowly happen and that's a nice way to see things too, is slow change versus you're not going to see a block torn down and replaced with eight stories. I've never seen that anywhere. And I don't see that happening in Almira. So, or St. Jacob. So you'll see the odd item, it just gives flexibility, gives opportunity. Um, so that we're not holding them back and having to come back to council for adjustments. Because our official plan already says you can do that. So they just become back for zoning, remember, say, as per your official plan, let me do this height. So we're just trying to make them. Give them what they need before having to come back each time.
Thank you, councillor Cudow.
Thank you, Chair. Back to the parking situation just for a moment. Um.
You drive around Almyra, especially in the wintertime and you'll see cars parked at the end of driveways, kind of sideways. You'll see cars fold in onto the lawn of properties. Is there anything that precludes individuals from parking anywhere they want on their property, even if it isn't on asphalt? Should they feel as if there isn't enough parking either on street, in the driveway or otherwise?
Through the chair of council, Kudrow. So the zoning bylaw does have regulations about how wide your driveway can be relative, especially the new subdivisions, how wide your driveway is relative to the to the size of lot and the, and the garage. The impervious pervious surface requirements we're putting in place means you can't pave everything and just start putting cars everywhere. There also is regulations under our property standards by law, which I'm not an expert in, but I let our clerk answer that, that you can't just park anywhere you want to on a property on like grass. It has to be on proper parking surfaces. So we are trying to minimize where people park for various reasons. Because we don't want three cars lined up before in front of a whole house and then you lose all your on-street parking too. So and then we lose, have our impervious surface problem. So we, we are trying to maintain that perspective of what you've generally seen in our communities and try to keep it with the garage and, and driveway not dominating everything. But yes, it is a struggle that we are seeing everywhere that people have cars and want somewhere to park them. And I think that's every city out there to some extent, unless we up, build up our active transportation system and our transit systems as we slowly build them up. And we're going to slowly start to see that. It takes time for that to transition. But we're hoping that as we introduce some of these changes, we will start to, and help transit or intensify our, our, our active transportation opportunities. And people will utilize other sources slowly over time. Helpful. But that's also at the same time realizing it's not going to happen quickly and we got to accommodate that parking somewhere.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Counselor Burgess?
Thank you. Through you, Chair, to Director Smith. So if we want to make one of these amendments now that have been suggested, whether it be parking or agriculture or patio stuff, do we just make a motion now to amend this? Or how would you like this?
So through you, Madam Chair, I would suggest first you hear from the delegate this evening. We typically ask questions from the report writer, then we hear from the delegate, and then you really get into the debate. Once you're in the debate portion of the meeting, either someone could put the motion on the floor that's proposed, which is, you know, to approve the zoning bylaw as, as presented. And then you could start looking at making amendments through there. Just, just by inventing that motion. So that would be my suggestion. You probably want to just touch base with the planners just to make sure we're on the same page in terms of exactly what change you're making. But that would be how I recommend you do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Seeing none, I think we can probably turn to our delegate. As a reminder to our delegates, we, you have a maximum of seven minutes to speak unless counsel or the clerk has set a different time. There will be a timer on the screen and you will hear a warning when you have one minute and another when your time is up. Once you've finished, please wait for count, for questions from council. When there are no more questions for you, please turn your microphone and camera off again, or in this case, we have a person in present. So return to your seat. You may listen to the rest of the meeting or you may leave if you'd like. Council discussion and debate will start when all questions of clarification have finished. So I will now call Mr. Calvin Yotsi, who is our registered delegate to, to council this evening to come forward and speak when he is ready.
I've only got one page. Madam Chair. This is a prelude. I have worked in Breslau my entire working life. And I would have really loved to build a house. But I'd like to thank staff, especially John, I wrote it here. I'm mimicking everybody else for all the hard work you've done getting this put together. Both a lot of trans, translating, transcribing and updating the old bylaws. Had to be a lot of work. Even though you knew it from way back, it still had to be a lot of work. As I stated, I've been, my, my entire working life has been in Breslau, in the same location. And it's been a long journey for me, starting in June of 2000, when we were in front of council, looking for a simple zone change from extractive because we'd taken an old gravel pit and, and, and redid it, brought it back to life to be used for other purposes. It took us six years to get the simple zone change. I, there were a lot of other issues there. And then after that, I had family issues for the next 15 years. And it was 2018 when we, when I talked to John about getting it started again. Thought I could do it, but I can't. Need glasses. I guess I gotta go to an 18 font. And now there's, because of the delay, there's all sorts of different issues that I have to deal with in order to get a house built. From getting noise survey, getting RSC, just to name a few. Especially with the requirement that we use municipal water, which means a 1,500 foot water line from the road to the, to build site. Also, this water line cannot be used in the EM1 portion of the front property. I was told the second line is required. When I asked why, they said because it's in bylaw. Or it's in the regulations. It'd be really nice to know why. And to move a little bit away from the zoning, I talked to Alex. She said this is more towards the building end of it. That if, if you want to promote houses being built by somebody other than a huge developer, you need to have either a booklet stating that if you want a severance, this, these, these are the check marks you got to hit. If you want to build a hu- a house on a, on a farm, a second place, these are the, the items you have to check off. Make sure. So you don't have to hire a planner. Planners, they're good, but they are expensive. And if you're just going to build one house, planner costs the same as what it does if you're going to build a subdivision. On, on that, I don't expect any, any, any any answers because I'm told the building people aren't here. But I'd just like to get it on the record that's, that's something, if you want to build houses, that's what you should, should do. Also, now this is just something that I've been thinking, that if, to make houses affordable, make some, a certain amount of new houses in subdivision be owner occupied. Have a stipulation that need to be owner occupied for say 10 years. That way you don't get all these, people call them investors. I call them, what did you call them, John? Yes, speculators. There's another word for it, but we'll leave that one where it sits. But that way it gives people a chance who want to buy and live in the house, that they have an opportunity to buy the house. That's everything. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Yotsi. Is there any questions from council for the delegate? Seeing none, I'll thank you for your delegation. You may return to your seat.
My delegation, thank you.
And then if there's, this is now our time for a discussion or any debate. Is there anyone that would like to kick it off? Are there, if there's none, we can move right to motioning to make amendments. I don't know if that's what Counselor Burgess would like to do. Counselor Schwinn?
I'll move the recommendation to start the process. I know there's going to be amendments coming forward.
All right. So we have a mover and a secondary. Is there any questions or debate about that? Seeing none, all those in favor of having a discussion? Or I'm not sure what we're doing. Yeah, any discussions for amendments? That's what we're kind of getting to. Counselor Burgess, you're on the hot seat.
Sure. Thank you. Through you, Chair, to start this off. Just back to the patio thing. Again, restaurants and microbreweries to me are two different things a little bit. They don't fall under the same thing. And microbreweries has kind of become a niche last decade or so here. And I don't think we should restrict them, especially when we saw some of the benefits during COVID with patios and stuff like that. And if we remove that stipulation of maximizing their retail and patio space, there's still other restrictions through building code and setbacks and parking spaces and all that. So I would be all for removing the amendment or removing the the floor place restriction. I don't know how you want me to word that, Director Smith, I can read out the change here, but add move a motion to remove the restriction for microbreweries that their hospitality patio space needs to be capped at their manufacturing gross floor space.
There, seconded. Counselor Schwinn, any discussion on that? Counselor Kudrow?
Wondering if we could hear from staff as far as if we were to make some adjustments to this, you know, what language perhaps would you recommend?
Through the chair to Counselor Kudrow. So I, I'm fine with the wording of the proposed amendment. That's clear enough for me from our end. I think ultimately we just take the current definition that we have. And all, there's the last section that talks about the patio space. We just delete it. So there's enough here for staff to go in and just change the, the main thrust of the beginning of the definition would remain to explain what a microbrewery is. And then we would include accessory sales and hospitality area, and then essentially would stop the definition there and where there's a comma instead. And get rid of the lounge patio restriction. So we would just amend it that way. So the direction in front of staff is enough to make, I decided it's appropriate. We're satisfied.
Counselor Kudrow?
Sorry. How is the definition that different then from a manufacturer of, I can't remember, of beer, alcohol, et cetera? Sorry, I'm just so many definitions here. So beer, liquor and wine manufacturing has another definition as well. So is microbrewery, does it deserve to be separate and aside from that? I guess is my question.
So I, I think essentially what the recommendation is at the moment would make the beer, liquor, liquor and wine and the microbrewery is almost the same by definition and getting rid of that element of concern on the microbrewery side about the patio section. So they would essentially be defined similarly. Yeah.
Any other questions or debate? Seeing none, we, Counselor Schwinn?
Lot early. We haven't touched on the on-farm business definition and conversation as much as I would have liked. We had a
Madam Chair, there is a motion on the floor that was moved and seconded. So if you want to, sorry, an amendment on the floor that was moved and seconded. So if you want to vote on that before going into new issues, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah. So we've had, there's no other further questions or debate when it comes to the microbreweries. Seeing none, because there's a motion, all those in favor. And that's carried. Thank you. And then Counselor Schwinn, you have a second amendment you'd like to bring forward.
I'm not comfortable with the zoning bylaw without having the on-farm business and diversified use conversation. It was a large issue before council in the fall. We kind of planted the issue down the road. I'm really reluctant to pass this comprehensive zoning bylaw, which by definition regulates on-farm businesses without having the conversation about what we want to allow or not allow. I know this new bylaw does allow a slight loosening of the rules. Personally, it doesn't go far enough for me. And if we pass it tonight or in three weeks' time, have the conversation in two months about revising it, I'm afraid we're not going to go far enough or we'll feel constrained. So I'd like some direction, I guess, from staff or council, how we can reconcile passing something tonight, knowing that we aren't comfortable with it.
Mr. Vink?
Through the, through the chair to Counselor Schwinn. I understand staff had hoped we could get the agricultural enforcement back prior to this, but unfortunately it did not work due to some scheduling conflicts. Where we're trying to meet with Ontario Federation of Agriculture. So we are coming, their staff is drafting a report, has drafted a report that's coming back to council. It will be probably in June at this point. As, as, as staff know, we did make some minor tweaks to start adjusting things a little bit to give some additional flexibility. When you see that report, you're going to see what the issues are and where we're sitting and the issues that we're seeing from our current on-farm businesses. I can tell you right now at this point, not to gauge the debate, that we're not far, our on-farm businesses, we're not having significant concerns about the, the regulations that are in place, that, you know, most regulation, most of them can meet those regulations for non-farm diversified use. And we are still bound by the province's regulations that are in place, the guidelines. So we still have the right guidelines to tell us where to go with the things and what we're doing. We're still following those and we're getting a lot of flexibility. I, I can tell you right now, Woolwich, based on my review, my assessment, Woolwich is probably one of the most lenient in terms of the agricultural uses out there right now in this vicinity. We have the on-farm diversified use regulations. We have the on, the on-farm, the home business occupation regulation, business tradesperson regulations. We give more than some of the other municipalities out there. So it's not going to take away from the debate we're going to have in the future. I think that debate and where that's going to go is beyond just small modifications. If it goes somewhere, it's either going to go to major modifications, which means we need to sit down with the farming community and others to do a more thorough review, which is not a not going to benefit holding up this whole bylaw for. That's a general amendment and that needs bigger discussions. Alternative is, is what we've done is going to be well enough until we do a minor amendment next year or the year after. So I'm not concerned that this won't help because we're doing some minor modifications that will help a few things potentially. So this is still good and keeps us moving. It doesn't stop you from saying, hey, maybe we want to do a major review and redirect staff because we don't have funding. We haven't set up a project timeline to do something like that. So we'd have to talk about council redoing a major review on the agricultural elements if we wanted to take a major look at the zoning requirement. So I'd say for now, move forward with this. It doesn't prohibit you or stop you from doing whatever you want in the future with the on-farm. It does give some additional flexibility right now. And in the interim, while we work on something else, if that does come forward, so do what we can a little bit now and go from where we can later, give what we can.
Counselor Schwinn?
Full question if I can. How did we leave that last fall as far as the timeline for suspending enforcement? So I'd like to bring those timelines together.
So all, the, the resolution by council said 12 to 18 months, I think, of the timeline. What, so we have lots of time under the suspension of enforcement. Staff would be recommending that when we bring the report back, we address those items and line things back up. So we make a plan about how we're going to proceed and either whatever the plan is, we set up a firm plan and a firm timeline with the next recommendation report. So that would be in June. So at that time, we'll realign and readjust the recommendation accordingly.
Thank you, Mayor Shans.
Th- this is not exactly on that, but it, it, it's kind of related because can, can you just remind us about where we sit in the official plan versus zoning update continuum? Because I, I, I think you said the last official plan was 2022 and the, the zoning changes are matching 2022. And now we're looking at a new official plan. So can you just remind us how that all fits together?
Definitely, because it is a complicated challenge that came in front of us. So through the chair to, to the mayor. So the 2022 update was supposed to reflect the ROP done in 2015. And should have been done in 20, shortly thereafter, but it didn't. We are way behind. It, it did hurt us with one of our OLT or at the time OMB matters on the south end of, uh, south end of the town and a, by the food land area. So it did cause a problem there where we were criticized that our OP was way out of date. So we did have to get it done. So we did do that, finished it in 2022. And now we're addressing the fact that the region did ROPA 6 the end of last year and our new OP will realign us with ROPA 6. And we might And we might uh we're doing the best we can with. Where we are that we hopefully won't have to do any major modifications to this by law, we're not anticipating that. We're trying to match the two up as best we can, so it's appropriate, there might be some mi- minor tweaks that come out of it. Um but we're not anticipating a major redo of the zoning by law result of the new. OP and the new updates that we're looking at, so it's another one, it'll be a minor uh update and address changes here and there.
So that's both for the OP then and the subsequent zoning.
That will follow, yeah.
And and what's our timeframe on that?
So we had originally hoped to take the official plan to council in June. Unfortunately, that is not going to happen because we still don't have a decision from the province on the boundary lines. So there there's no possibility way we can get an OP. With boundary lines that we don't know exist yet, so. We are delaying the implementation and present present presentation of the OP till the fall, probably September. It's all contingent on when we get final decision from the province on the settlement boundary lines and what we're gonna implement, so. We are delaying the OP till the fall at this point in time.
Are there any other questions, Council Kado?
Thank you Chair, we did hear from one delegate and. They brought up concerns that we've heard before in these council chambers, so I just wanted to reflect on them. I don't think that there is a real solution that staff would be able to offer, but from a customer service perspective, for those. Who may have property in the township and wanna build a house on it and are feeling that they're faced with insurmountable red tape. Um you know, what could we do to support them in navigating that?
So thank you, Council Kado, so. Well, through the half funding, um which we're gonna talk about a bit later. We are to look at some methods, one of our initiative is to a concierge to try help people through the. With some half funding processes and programs and that might help them through the planning process. Generally speaking, staff. You know, staff pick up the phone, staff email email people, staff will meet with people and try walk them through the process. The unfortunate reality is the planning world is not a simple world to know and negotiate through, like when you will take a Z O P. That's the same size as your zoning document and expect the average person to understand it, it's not. So we try walk them through it as best we can, so the average individual can get through a variance. But when you get to a zone change, they need to retain a planning consultant, there's just no two ways around it, the region. And ourselves will never, like the region won't accept a planning application unless there's a planning justification by a planning consultant. The process has requires those kind of things, so. Uh Mr. Yutsi had to go through because he's an industrial area and agricultural properties and he had it extractive on the property for. He had to go through a number of things because this wasn't as simple as necessary and it took a while and he had a planning consultant. To guide him through that process and that's true, it doesn't come cheap necessarily, but we try to do the best we can and walk them through. The other alternative is what you've we've said tonight is trying to make our by law as. Flexible as possible to match our OP to give the people opportunity that they don't have to come to a zoning amendment. So that's where you get that eight story element coming from, so how do we? Give the right amount of flexibility without throwing everything out? So that's what we try to achieve, so people don't have to come in all the time for zoning amendments and spend money or go through a planning consultant. And that's why we do the minor tweaks or modifications every so often because we see issues and we might make a minor modification to make it better uh. So that's the best we can offer, uh we try to do that and like I said, staff here is available, generally speaking, they you will get someone, you will can walk in this door and usually find a planning person. To walk you through and talk to you. Um I think even council will can walk in, has noticed some of the times you can walk in and find a planning staff person there, talk to them, so we do our best. To try and guide people through, but it's not easy because it is a complex system, unfortunately.
Thank you, Council Schwenk?
I'm sorry, I want to jump on Council Kado's point there because that. Delegate resonated with me as well as how. Difficult it is to do small scale things. It's pretty easy to build a seven hundred acre auto parts plant, it looks like in Wilmont, but you wanna build a. Three unit place in Almira. The percent of money spent on planning gets out of whack. So the one comment that I really liked was, could there be a checklist? It's easier for people who come in, here's the process on the top five things. We see for planning applications, but you have to follow through because they're reamed off, you know, one-on-one meeting. I know from experience from one resident I talked to that it's overwhelmed and. This minor thing that we think is a two-minute document seems overwhelming to the residents and they won't proceed. Whereas it could be easy if there's a, this is how you do it.
Guess only through the chair, um we have done that in the in the past with our accessory dwelling units, we just we put a little brochure together, how you do it. So definitely if there's ideas, we could start to work towards that, uh that's something we could utilize. Uh as available for staff to kind of do a little checklist thing where it might help um. You know, like I said, we do walk people through that and we'll talk them through the process and explain that and the pre-application process we start them through in a zoning. Is one of the things we do, which we didn't used to do as much before, but government moved us in that a little more, we always. The pre-application process allows us to kind of sit down with them. Check off and say, here's what you're going to need for reports and studies, here's what the what you can do, hey. Staff will sometimes even say, look, you propose this, but maybe this is a better solution, maybe look this as an option. Because this might work better on your site uh based on what we see, so we might off, we may even offer at times offer opportunities and solutions. Um and then they know how much they're gonna have to spend before they move to, or better understand what they need to spend to get to complete application. So they're not spending thousands and thousands and thousands upfront, they know, okay, I need to do these, this is gonna cost me this much, do I wanna spend that much money or not? Yes or no, before you start going down that road and start hiring all the consultants to do it? So uh we are doing that process too, but yeah, definitely we could add checklists uh and like I said, anybody can come in and I, we often have people call us back and say like, what do I need to do again? Yeah, I'm up, so we can create checklists if need be.
Director Freeze, did you, I saw your hand kind of hovering at one point?
Yeah, I think Jeremy kind of answered my question as well, so for those very simple. Applications like a minor variance application, an individual can come in and they can do their own application, they can do those things on their own. But when you're looking at a zoning by law amendment, Jeremy's right, it's a very complicated process. However, we do have a preconsultation process, which is actually divided now into two steps, there's a very simple one, someone comes in with a very simple plan, says I wanna do this. With my property and we'll give them um basically a shopping list of what they would need. In order to do that, um then there's the second step of the preconsultation process, which is much more detailed and we have detailed um information to comment on and. Lot more detailed comments come back out through. Through us and through the various departments to really give them an idea of this is what's required for a full application. Um the unfortunate part about it is those requirements are not simple and they're not able to be done by an individual, they require professional um technical expert expertise, so. Um transportation studies, planning studies, environmental studies, things like that, but the list is there. It's just not simple and easy to do as an individual that doesn't have that technical expertise.
Thank you, Mayor Shance.
Thank you for that, um Director Freeze, um because I was gonna. Ask the question, I know a number of years ago, we had a similar discussion about how can we make it more. Simple for the average person coming in and to ensure that uh they don't. Come back with something and then are told, oh, but you also need this and you also need this and you also need this, so. Um I'm assuming from what you've just described is uh if I come in and I wanna. Do some, I don't know, put a pool in or whatever, you can give me a list of. Check off, okay, you need this, 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 this and this, and when I bring those things in. You're not gonna add this, this and this to the list.
Uh yes, uh so that's correct, so you would have a list of all the items that you were needed, then we would get uh the application and we could determine that it was a complete application. Um the only additional items that might be required that come out of that is uh comments that come out of those studies, so if you submitted your transportation studies and there are some additional questions or. Um understanding that's needed by uh through our reviewer or our peer review, then there might need to be some amendments to that study, but the. Basics are there and that's determined through the preconsultation process.
Council Schwenk?
Um so brings up my next question on studies and that checklist, have we reviewed what studies and. Boxes we want checked on some of these minor projects as far as are they appropriate anymore or not? Example I'm gonna use is if you wanna build. A six plaques across road from Foodland. And you need traffic study because there's six more units there, I'm thinking that doesn't pass the smell test for me, but it's six places. Plaque and sanitary hookups in Floridale would pass. Task for me is good planning, so I guess do we review that on an ongoing basis, what's appropriate and can we make it easier?
Director Freeze?
Through you, uh Madam Chair, so yes, constantly we're reviewing these things, there's different standards, industry standards for when certain things are required, so. A traffic impact study is probably like a very easy one that you can determine because you can look at the industry standards. If it generate generates this many trips or then it would require a traffic study, if not, then it doesn't, um same thing with things like shadow studies. The industry standard is if it's over six stories, then potentially it could require a shadow study, under, it doesn't require it. So there's a lot of industry standards there, but we're constantly looking at our requirements and what would be needed, so it's a it it's involving all the time.
Mr. Vink?
Just to add to that, um so we have, you know, for people doing studies, we have terms of reference that we've standardized, we've tried to work with the other regional municipalities. And the region, we sort of standardized, so if a developer is working or someone's coming in. There you're gonna kind of get the same sort of answer what the report should look like, whether you're in Waterloo or Woolwich. So we've got some sort of standard terms of reference of how the report would look like. Um the engineering and design manual, for example, outlines when they would trigger, in some cases, a traffic study or things like that, so. We do have things kind of set in place to kind of identify when things might be required. And would give guidance along those lines, so we have those sitting there and we will, and when somebody comes in. That's we kind of start going through that checklist, as engineering staff will look at and like, is this needed, is this needed, planning staff will go through what reports required. Those are identified in our official plan, what kind of reports we would request, so they're outlined, so we would go through and say which ones are appropriate and needed. And which ones are not needed, and then we identify them with the applicant. And it doesn't stop the applicant from coming back to us saying, could you explain why we need this, or? Do we really need this and debating whether one could be dropped off for whatever reason or another, but. It's we start with that checklist and go through and say, hey, we okay, we need this, we might need this, we might, we're gonna need this and go from there.
Are there any other discussions or questions? Seeing none, there is an amended recommendation, um do we need to, or Council Schwenk?
Apologies, we heard questions about the parking requirements beforehand and I don't think we went anywhere with that, is that something? We should discuss further?
Uh Deputy Director Freeze? Um I'll just speak up now because I think that this is kind of tied together with the the heights, the parking, all of those things. So we have provincial direction to accommodate a certain level of density, um specifically in our settlement areas. Um we're hearing what you're saying about the concerns about parking, about the concerns about height. Um but concerns about uh multiple cars parking on these smaller lots and all of those, those concerns for those uh. Uh things that are all kind of tied with that density. But we still need to get that density, so the way that we get we're getting that density is through heights, is through smaller lots, is through reductions in parking and. And trying to increase our our opportunities for transit. Um and also is with that density. And adding that to that transit, we add community uses, we add uh commercial uses, we add, we create those fifteen minute communities, so it's all tied together, so it's not. Um it's not one thing that stand alone, um that we can understand how our rural settlement areas are a little bit different and they can have larger lots and and. Parking is not an issue, whereas our our more urban settlement areas, there is issues because we have to accommodate that density in some way. This is the way that we're proposing to do it, we're proposing to do it with what we would consider um a gentle increase in height and I understand. Um there's there's some debate about what is a gentle increase and whether it's eight stories or it's something different. Uh we're doing that by adding additional residential units to um what used to be single um detached lots, that also caused that parking issue. We're adding um additional densities in these multi-blocks that have um apartment buildings and semi-detached and higher types of. Of densities there with reduced parking, again, that causes more more issues along the parking side. Um all of these ways are are, there is a give and take to each of them, but if we wanna accommodate density, we wanna limit sprawl. We have to do something, so that's the why why we are proposing some of these things that you're seeing in the in the zoning by law. So the only thing I'm asking and the only reason I'm bringing it up now is that if you're gonna consider parking, let's consider like all of the things that kind of uh. Combined to create density and create those complete communities, the fifteen minute communities, transit supportive. And can support things like those commercial uses that we know that our community has been asking for.
Council Schwenk?
So the first obvious question to me is what happens if we don't meet the density target and say, sorry, proud instead of X for making it X minus two?
Director Freeze?
So I can comment on this and Jeremy and John can as well, um I think the risk that you would find is that you would get appeals that would go to the O L T. And if our zoning by law is not supportive of the densities that the province is directing us, then we wouldn't win.
Mr. Vink and then Mayor Shance?
Uh so just in regards, when we're dealing with plans of subdivision, for example, if somebody was to come in in a lower density than is required. The region wouldn't actually accept it, um they would dispute, they would tell you that you don't meet the minimum density requirement, so we would probably, they would stall a development. Uh basically, so we do have to meet those minimums. To allow something to proceed, basically, otherwise it will not pass the test to get moving forward, so. Uh we had it in some subdivisions where the region has said back, said this doesn't meet the minimums, we're not going to prove move forward with this plan, it just doesn't meet those density requirements. So we do have to achieve those density requirements as a bare minimum. Um if we want to be and tied to what Indiana was saying is. If we want to be more efficient with the services we have and what we're putting in the ground and make it more cost effective and not. Put ourselves into further and further infrastructure debt in the future. We have to find ways to make that density work too, otherwise make that to help support those services we're putting in the ground and pay for them in the long term. So you need the density to go with it, so there's that fine line here that we're trying to achieve. Transit-supported densities, uh walkability and fiscally responsible densities. To grow our communities uh in our urban areas and. And then if we just continue to let people sprawl out or build and have lots of cars, they're not going to move that way and we're not going to. We're gonna build the way we've been building in the eighties and this probably not gonna get us the best development we're looking for.
Mayor Shance?
Thank you, we're we're definitely not building the way we did in the eighties. Um but in terms of density, my understanding was that. Uh the density that the province has given us is a regional density. And then as a region, we made some agreements as to where, so it it's obviously the density is a lot greater along. The L R T and that was sort of a part of the the purpose of the L R T. And so the the density is greater in the city, so I think um. To to your point, I don't think it's the province that is telling us in Woolwich what our density has to be, I think we've been, and correct me if I'm wrong, but. Um I I think the density was region-wide and then uh we we came to agreements as to what the density would be in each of the areas.
Just with regards to densities, um the regional official plan dictates the densities. So yes, along the the along the ion etcetera, they do have a higher density requirement. Um for Woolwich uh and the other townships and regions. Across regions, township urban areas, Almira Saint Jacobs have a minimum density of forty-five people and jobs per hectare. Uh to help achieve the provincial requirements, so that was a standard that the the smaller townships had a lower density. And the cities compensated with a higher density to achieve the overall average, so. The townships are given in the regional official plan, which we have to follow, is the forty-five people and jobs per hectare. The urban areas, which is uh stockyards and Breslaw have to achieve fifty-five people and jobs per hectare uh as the minimum, so. The cities have to achieve, that was the compensation, it was instead of fifty, it was forty-five here and fifty-five here, so type thing, so. That was the compensation and we have to follow those minimums because they're in our official plan too, so they were implemented in our plan because they're in the regional plans, we have to be consistent with those.
Thank you, Mayor Shance?
Our Director Freeze, did you have a?
Maybe you can have, um but the the actual density that the province cares about. Is the density in the region, is that? Is that true or have I misunderstood that?
Uh yeah, through you, Madam Chair, so yes, the region gives or the province gives the region a raw density that we at the regional plan divides that out between the townships. Then we take that into our official plan and then implement through our zoning by law, so it's, yes, it's coming from the province to the region, but then it's getting decimated down. To all the different townships and cities.
But in the end, if um if the cities, for example, um create a greater density. From the provincial point of view, uh they're gonna look at how it, how it kind of pans out across. they're going to look at how it pans out across the whole region, right? Just to?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. Yes, in theory. However, yeah, if you're looking at the broader numbers and what they pop out to be at the end of the, I don't know, five-year mark or whatever, they evaluate them. But they will look at individual applications through OLTs as well. And if we're saying that, no, we're not supporting a higher density that's even close to our 45 units per hectare, then yeah, we would have difficulty there. So I guess it's a kind of, it's a two-way answer.
Councilor Schwan?
So the way I'm seeing this then is parking became the easy scapegoat because nobody thinks about that or measures it when you're building a new house. So it's easy to knock that back to T-density and we have this aspiring goal of 15-minute communities, which I'm not convinced works in St. Jacobs with a huge hill. Might work really well in Breslaw in 15 years once the supermarket arrives and more services come. But in the meantime, we're building bad developments that won't work on the short term. And maybe at some point, we have to say no.
Mr. Vink?
I wouldn't say we are ignoring parking or using it as the easy scapegoat. We know it's there. We're not knocking back parking. Like we are looking at what's reasonable as much as we can. So we're not doing dramatic cuts. If you look at other cities, then you will see that some cities, and not bigger cities, I'm talking like states and Toronto and things like that, they're eliminating parking requirements, basically. And they're setting and trying to basically get rid of the car, but they're putting it all on the streets. So you're just compensating somewhere. We're not going that far. And that's what our staff is trying to say is we're not trying to forget that. We're trying to balance the two out and try to achieve what we can. The unfortunate reality sometimes is yes, some people are trying to put four cars on a single wide driveway. That doesn't make sense. That's not really practical, no matter how you do it. But that's an unfortunate reality and something that we are going to have to start to look at of how we achieve parking better. And that's something we will have to sit down with the infrastructure staff is how we do things better in our urban areas. But how do we be more efficient with what's out there? Without demanding more parking spaces on a property and making big, long driveways and just more cars in front of a house? Because that's not good for urban design either. So we got to try to find a way to achieve this. We're not saying cut the parking. We're not slashing parking. We're trying to achieve and basically maintain as much as we can of the parking and that's reasonable.
Councilor Bryant?
Thank you. Can we look at putting in parking lots for overflow from some of these homes? So they're not all over the streets and encroaching on other people's ability to use their property?
Through the chair, we have not ignored or eliminated that possibility. It's just not high on our list to the reason we don't. We'd like to see that maybe in condos where you're going to see that 1.1 mix in a condo plan and a mixed-use development. From a residential standpoint, a typical subdivision where we own the road and we'd have to own that parking lot, it just adds maintenance costs for repair, replacement and just snow clearing, things like that. So we've been a little hesitant from the township side to take on that kind of cost. Because now we're just increasing our costs there. So we're trying, we'd like to look at other solutions first, I think. I wouldn't say we'd say no, but it's something we want to be cautious about is how can we better utilize parking on people's property as well as maybe on our streets that already exists for paved surfaces versus creating more parking spaces somewhere else and fight over who gets them, so.
Councilor Bryant? Thank you. Can I quick follow up? Can we then go to more no parking on the streets and see if that restricts people from having three and four cars if they know there's nowhere to park them? I mean, there's got to be some sort of a solution we can come to because I don't want to see neighbors fighting. We've already got that in Riverland. And I don't know what the answer is, but if we can limit cars, then maybe that will, I don't know.
Just for clarification, we're not changing a lot of the parking standards that are in the current bylaw, like rows, semi, singles, all the same. The only thing we're changing is adding a parking requirement for stacked townhouses, which is the 1.1. And for group multiple housing where you have a condo block that will have a very mix of housing types, and that was the blended rate. So all the other parking stays the same. Singles, what we've done, other municipalities don't do is on those small lots that have single-car garages, we require the garage to be nine meters back so you can get two stacking spaces on the driveway as opposed to some of the other municipalities, that's only six meters. And the unfortunate thing is, is what's causing some of the parking issues in these small lots is people don't use their drive, their garages for parking cars. So that's, and so we recognize that. And that's why we shifted the garage nine meters back on those single-car garages and single-car driveways so you can at least get two cars on the property, even if they're not using their garage for parking. And that's, I think, is one of the main problems in some of these smaller lots is people are not using their garages for parking spaces.
Yeah, just further to what John's saying as well, we also have looked at minor variance options for people that do want to widen their driveways and looking at making those spaces impervious, or impervious surfaces to try to deal with those. Because we recognize it is an issue and people are having more and more cars with these smaller lots. I don't know if there's an easy solution to it. Also looking at more opportunities for mixed-use development so that you could have shared parking. So commercial during the day might be full, but residential at night. So shared parking there. Like we're looking at opportunities. It's a tough issue without going to, you know, requiring every single detached to have three parking spaces or four parking spaces in giant lots. It's a tough issue and we're trying to figure out ways to accommodate and to figure out ways around it. It's just, it's difficult.
Thank you. Councilor Burgess?
Through you, Chair. This is maybe aside, but talking about parking and garages, are there any building codes around size of garages? A lot of the new houses and semis, their parkings are so narrow, you can't even fit a truck in them and still use it.
Definitely, so to the councillor. So in our zoning bylaw, we have a requirement about how big the space is in the garage. We were having some problems where some people were, what was happening is the developer was putting in the garage, but then they put stairs in to get to your garage door and some of the car didn't fit, type thing. So we do have minimums in the bylaw requirements for what constitutes a garage space for a car parking. So we make sure that they are big enough, basically, to fit the car in. So yeah, we're trying to make every option we can to make sure parking works and that you can get parking in there. When, like I said, I think John P. Claire is like, we're not cutting back parking. We're just trying to maintain what's out there today, basically. But because we added the group multiples, this new zones, we just put in new parking requirements to go with them. So we're not cutting back any parking out there anywhere. And if the question's on the on-street parking, there was that question. I don't want to ignore that. That would be an infrastructure services question about parking bylaws and that would be Jared, just in case. You wanted to know where that went. I don't want to ignore that comment.
It sounds like Mr. Vink is throwing the hot seat to Jared at this point.
Thank you, Chair Grant. I was hoping that we would ignore that. Thank you, Jeremy. No, yeah, I think everything that we're talking about, there's definitely a ying and a yang here, right? Because if we're trying to address parking and we're also trying to increase densities, they're opposed, right? So I think the real challenge is, from what our vantage point is twofold. If you are permitting increased impervious area on a lot, obviously, then that has impacts on infrastructure with respect to drainage and stormwater management, right? So there's an impact there. So there's a balance to be had in that case. And then the on-street parking, we get calls all the time, please restrict parking because they don't, but not on my side, on that side, right? Or, you know, you'll never get alignment. I think that some of the larger city centers, like Kitchener, has looked at a road corridor to balance out this issue, also with traffic calming. And they have gone to a narrower corridor and permitted parking both sides because it slows people down. So that's one thing. And it addresses the parking issue that they have to. I'm not advocating that that's necessarily the township's approach, but I just wanted to paint a picture that that is what Kitchener has moved towards. I think from my perspective in our department, it makes sense to have parking on both sides of the road. I think there is a calming effect that occurs and it does permit that overflow parking. You know, it's awful to see people move out on the street and have their driveways empty and commandeered a whole bunch of space on the road. But we also are having properties now where there may be three, four, or five people living in there, three of them driving, four of them driving. And this is the real challenge. So I think that does try to at least balance some of that by maintaining parking and not restricting parking. I think we would not look to try to restrict parking if possible, unless there was a safety concern or an emergency service concern, right? But we do communicate with the fire department and it is rare, there are instances where the road is very narrow and we look to restrict parking and we do that in conjunction with emergency services. But outside of that, if we just took a request from a resident to limit parking just out of a convenience issue, that wouldn't be something I think that we would look to move forward on from a staff perspective. We would want to maintain status quo and have parking on both sides.
Are there any further discussions, any motions? Seeing none, we do have a motion on the floor for the report as remended. Do I have a mover and a second or has it already been moved in second? We've already done that, yes, sorry. Okay, so then I guess I'm just going to call a vote, all in favor. And that is, and all those opposed? Seeing none? That is carried. So this brings us to unfinished business, which there is none, but we do have a consent item. There is one item on the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove it for discussion? Or is there someone willing to move the consent agenda? Moved by Mayor Shonks, seconded by Councilor Schwint. Any discussion regarding that item? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Now we move to staff reports and memos. We next have the Director of Development Services, Deanne Fries, to provide an overview of report on the Housing Accelerator Fund.
We just have a little PowerPoint to share here. So as council knows, and this will be some repeat information for council, but this is the first time that we're going out in an open session with this information. So we have received funding through the Housing Accelerator Fund. What I will quickly do, and I'll try to be very quick with this, is run through the initiatives that we have through the Housing Accelerator Fund. We do have to move forward with all of these initiatives in order to get our funding. So let's move to the next slide. So we were approved for $6.7 million in funding, but it is provided through incremental payments, assuming that we are meeting our milestones for each of our 10 initiatives that will support the creation of housing. It is calculated based on a three-year timeframe. We already have the first installment and the second installment will be coming soon with some reporting on where we have achieved so far with our milestones. All of the initiatives will have to be completed by the end of 2026. So our first initiative is to, is the Development Ready Strategy for Added Urban Expansion Areas. As you know, we're still waiting for some confirmation from the province on what those exact lines will be for what will be included in the Breslaw settlement area. But we will be able to use some half-funding to support our Breslaw Secondary Plan and designation of properties that could accommodate medium density within this area. We'll also be looking at our infrastructure, our transportation needs in this area for the Breslaw Secondary Plan. Second initiative will be township underutilized land development. So what this will do is it will look at a standardized process for the transfer of land to facilitate redevelopment by private developers. So that may involve the township strategically purchasing some properties and then disposing of them through the RFP process and any identification of any of the surplus properties that the township might already own that could be developed for residential development. Next slide. Our third initiative is a very simple one, is a Transportation Master Plan that would deal with the entire township to ensure that our community is transit-ready and we can identify any kind of transportation corridors and nodes that could accommodate those higher densities that we talked about through the zoning bylaw and potential for intensification. So this initiative would just be able to support the, the half-funding would be able to support the cost of retaining a consultant to complete this study for us. Next slide. The next one is what we briefly talked about earlier as well as the Concierge Service for Affordable or Attaining Housing Developments. And this is one of the areas where we would be looking at temporary staff person to come on board to help provide that service and also provide an educational program, which could, as we talked about before, which could help remove those barriers, make it easier for applicants to navigate through the planning process. The next slide, the next initiative is Mixed Use Development Design Guidelines. Again, this would be a RFP that would go out. We would retain a consultant and we would use half-funding to prepare these guidelines. The idea would be that it would become a resource for the development community to make everything a little bit clearer and understanding what kind of development we can get and where intensification can occur. Accessory residential units. So this is the promotion of those missing middle type of development through accessory residential units. We already allow them. They are allowed in the zoning bylaw that we talked about today and we've looked at increasing flexibility to allow these. This staff person that we would be looking at bringing on board for one to two years would be able to develop some marketing, communication, education material to make it easier for the individual landowner, that person that has one lot and wants to create a few, one or more accessory residential units on their property. The next one, which is talked about pretty extensively in this report and we are moving forward with in the immediate future, is a pilot program for rental housing, waiving the development charges and building permit fees to allow or to encourage developers to go ahead with rebuilding rental units. So we do have a number of different properties that we have identified that could take advantage of this incentive program. And we were hoping that through the half-funding that this would help encourage them to move ahead within that three-year period, get more rental housing on the market faster. The next one is the Long-Term Affordable and Attainable Housing Program. And this is a streamlined approvals framework that we've been working on with the cities and the townships within the region to create one coordinated program across the region of Waterloo. The township doesn't have any large parcels that we'd be looking at declaring surplus for development of a big housing initiative at this time. But we would still like to be part of this whole framework so that in the event that we have the opportunities, we have the framework in place. Next one is the Housing Needs Assessment. This was actually a requirement for the half-funding that we have a completion of a housing needs assessment and also regular updates of the housing needs assessment. This would determine the future needs or the current and future needs of the township. So figuring out what do we actually need in this community? What do we need to plan for and what we need to look at providing further incentives and to encourage that type of housing? And last, the last one is the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw that we talked about today and that's allowing four units in zones that are R3 and up. So we talked about that briefly today and the half-funding is conditional on having that as part of our zoning bylaw. Next slide. So as far as our progress, so you'll see there's some information in the report that was put in front of you today. We hope to re-initiate the Breslaw Secondary Plan. We are still waiting that provincial announcement so we can understand exactly where those settlement boundaries are so we can go ahead with our secondary plan and also finish up our official plan. We've identified potential properties for affordable or attainable housing that we would be looking at coming to council with potential to consider township property surplus or consider purchase of some properties within the township. We are already participating in that region-wide working group for that long-term affordable, attainable housing program to put together that framework. So we're a part of that group and that's moving ahead. And as you've seen in the report, we want to move ahead with the rental housing initiative that we do need some direction from council to support the program, to endorse the initiative, to also establish a reserve fund and delegate the director, myself, to give out this funding and also execute those agreements for individuals to give the money for the rental housing initiative. And then lastly, in the report, we would be looking at hiring a temporary staff person. So this person could assist with the preparation of the RFPs for the Transportation Master Plan, the Mixed Use Design Guidelines and the Housing Needs Assessment. So they would prepare the RFP and then also manage the projects once we had the consultants on board working on those projects. They would also be able to provide that expedited review for affordable and attainable housing developments. They could create the educational programs and the information for affordable and attainable housing and as well as accessory residential units. So all that educational promotional material needs to be created by someone. This person could assist with that. This person could assist with that. And then lastly, that we would be proceeding with the implementation of the Rental Housing Incentive Program. So that's also explained in the, in the report as well. So we need somebody to actually go out there, market this program and then work with the individuals to draft those development agreements that would be registered on title for those rental housing and give out the funding as well. So all of this stuff, all of these initiatives, they take a lot of time. We don't have the staff on board and, and we need to hire this contract person to, to help us get these initiatives in place or we won't get the funding. So very important, they're all tied together. In order to get the funding, we need to, to hire the person in order to do all the initiatives and to meet our milestones.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any questions for Director Fries? Mayor Shontz.
Thank you. Thanks for the report, Deanne. It's always great news when we get some help from other levels of government. I think we had talked about in the neighborhood of 700 units kind of in the pipeline that are already sort of sitting there waiting to be built and/or developed. And you talked about 275 rental units. Can you just, can you just explain the sort of the 700 and, and what's sitting out there that's either approved or almost approved that we could maybe push forward with?
Yeah, and actually I'm happy that John's here because he might be able to help me with this answer as well. But yes, there's a number of, of properties that have planning approvals for multi-residential potential rental buildings, but they haven't moved ahead with them because the market's not there. So we're hoping that through this incentive for rental housing, we'll be able to encourage the development of those units. We have allocated and in our half application, our Housing Accelerator Fund application, $3 million for this program. And based on that $3 million, we have an understanding of how many units we could potentially see until we run out of that funding to, to help them for that implementation. So anything they wanted to add with?
There are a number of lots throughout the township that have the zoning. Like for instance, there's a couple of multi-blocks in Lunar Development on Church Street where they're zoned for apartment dwellings and they would be a candidate. There's a few blocks, mixed-use blocks with apartments in the Thomas Field-Hope Heights crossings where they are, have site plan approval for apartment-type development with mixed use, which would, could be a candidate. And there is the Southwood Four, there's an apartment block there that's zoned for it, for a six-story that could be a candidate. So there are, that, that's just a few of them. I think we were being conservative as to what we can use that funding for as far as incentive for it. But there are a number of projects that are in various stages that could be candidates.
Mayor Shontz.
Just, just one more, I appreciate that the money isn't all coming at once and there are certain planning pieces that we need to put in place so that we're doing the right thing at the right time with the right people sort of thing. I was talking to someone recently who said that building material prices are going up again. So I guess my suggestion would be the, the pieces that we can do to encourage the building that's already sort of in the pipeline, we should do as soon as we can in this, in this whole planning process.
Thank you, through, through you, Madam Chair. I would also point out that we have a number of initiatives that we've identified here, these 10 initiatives that we have to move forward with and we have to report on our milestones. But we will have additional funding beyond these initiatives. So if there are other things that come to light, like opportunities to purchase properties, we will have that money that is available still to do that. So we're, we're trying to develop a responsible plan so that we don't use everything that we don't even have yet, but we can use the full amount to support housing.
Thank you, Counselor Schwint and Counselor Burgess.
Question on the contract planner, is that covered by the half funding? Is that money we're gonna have to look for from the existing budget? And I guess I'm also wondering what our track record in promoting housing so far, how are we doing on Kwanah's House?
So through you, Madam Chair, so Kwanah's House, my understanding and Jeremy can comment on this as well, is that they will be moving forward with their site plan application in 2024. And to answer the other question, and I'll let Jeremy comment on, further on that, Kwanah's House, to answer the other question is yes, this would be fully coming out of the half funding. We did include it in our cost estimates when we submitted our application because we knew that we would need that additional support.
Mr. Bink?
So yes, we are hoping they'll move forward this year. So they haven't, they haven't acquired the property yet. They've had to work to get funds in place to acquire and start the construction. So the last time I reached out to them, they were hoping to start moving forward this year to, to start, to at least acquire the property from us and start site plan approval. Maybe we'll be able to use some of the funds we have here to help spur this on too. So this will be one of the spots that maybe we could potentially even look at and add because they're rental housing. So we would be able to use some of that funding that we're talking about to reduce some of their costs. That might help happen there. Because it's not all affordable housing, it's only a portion of the building will be affordable housing.
Thank you, Counselor Burgess.
Thanks through you, Chair. Just a couple of questions here. One of the lines that states, if housing units do not remain as rentals for five-year time period, the subsidy agreement will permit the township to recover subsidy through a process similar to the municipal taxes. Should we look at increasing that five years? Like isn't the Kwanah's House like 20 years or something?
Through you, Madam Chair, so we did look at that option. We can, we can increase that if we'd like. The, our understanding was that five years would allow those properties to be developed as rental units and rented out. After that five years, if they wanted to convert the, to a condo and ownership, they would still need to meet our minimum vacancy requirements. So in theory, if the vacancy rate doesn't allow for them to convert, they wouldn't be able to convert from rental anyway. So it would really depend on what our community needs were at that time and what that vacancy rate was, whether they could, could even convert.
Mayor Shontz.
I, I think like my, because I, I caught that too and I, I thought five years isn't very long. But I think the piece is the affordable piece as opposed to the vacancy piece. And I, I think, I, I think other municipalities are like around 20 years.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. So in this particular incentive, it would not be for affordable. It would be for rental, for that missing middle attainable type of development, not affordable development. So some of our other initiatives look at affordable development, this one would not. So there is a housing need for different types of housing. The rental housing would not be affordable. However, through the program, we would prioritize developments that had included affordable housing. And if they were including affordable housing, then we might want to look at a agreement that was longer that would allow, that would require that property to remain affordable for longer periods of time. So the, yeah, there are different initiatives for different types of housing.
As long as the affordability piece that we, we maintain that because I think generally there's more incentives and, and more, sorry, it's been a long day. But yeah, more incentives for, for that kind of housing. And so I think we need to, to hold on to that longer.
Thank you, Counselor Burgess.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I agree with what Mayor Shontz was saying there about affordability piece. And I'm still torn on this five-year things, but we'll move on. For fun being, Counselor Schwint asked about the position being covered. What about, like when you go through your report on the doc, for the document, there's a lot of fees for different processes and studies and waiving all the billing permit fees and all that. How much of that is covered by half and how much are we covering? Like is 100% gonna be?
Through you, Madam Chair, 100% would be covered for all of these initiatives. So the waiving of development charges and building permit fees for the rental housing program, 100% covered under the half funding.
So we'd be reimbursed that normal fee then, or are we just?
They would still pay for other types of application fees, but those two particular fees would be funded through the half funding. So we would take the money out of the half funding reserve and give it to those development charges. So we would still be collecting the development charges. They would just be paid for through the half fund.
Perfect, thank you. And just to follow up, another line, it said, the level of funding the township receives is based on our ability to meet the unit targets. Are we at all at risk of losing money putting stuff out before we've accomplished certain levels? Or is there a chance that we could get stuck if not everything goes the way we're planning?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. If we do not achieve our milestones for our incentives, we would not get the next installments. So yes, there is a risk. That's why we're only spending the amounts that we have already through the first installment and then we'll spend more when we get the next installment. So we're not spending more than we have. However, the, the position will be easily able to be funded through the first installment.
Okay, so basically with that reserve fund, we bring in our original funding, use it and then hopefully get the next batch kind of thing. And that's what's the reserve fund basically being used for, we're not funding our own money.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. So we are allocating half a million for the, the first year. I think we have 2 million for the second year and 1.5 for the third year. So in the event that we didn't receive the funding for the second or third year, then we would have to cancel the pilot program.
Thank you. Is there any, Counselor Cadeau?
I think I know the answer, but there's no clawbacks then if we don't meet those objectives. We just don't get the next round of funding.
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, that's correct. They won't take it back, they just won't give us more.
Is there any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, there is a recommendation. Is anyone willing to move it? Counselor Cadeau, seconded by Mayor Shontz, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Next, we have the Director of Infrastructure Services, Jared Pupay, to present his report on the tender award for contract.
Thank you, Chair Grant and through you, members of council. Happy here to present our final tender award report for the 2024 Capital Bridge and Culvert Program. This will be our first foray into SIPP, which is sprayed-in-place pipelining. The township has been very successful in cured-in-place pipelining and this is our, our first foray into this. We did come across some derelict culverts on one here in Oriole Parkway and one just downstream from it on Union Street. Council will recall that these both were contained as part of the draft 2024 capital budget but were later cut because of funding constraints. So one of the advantages now we do have too is once we have released the approved projects, which was this is our third and final tender award for this particular program, there is some available funding and that is contained in the report. And Pine Creek Road is where staff are asking to reallocate the $50,000 worth of levy. This is a project that started in 2022. It is a, a poor-conditioned structure on Pine Creek Road, which is a boundary essentially between Gualpher and Mosa and us. And one of the, the things that this would be used for would be to determine what we do with that structure, whether we replace it, rehab it, or remove it entirely. So that project was paused because there was not funding to support the engineering design and we are in a, in a fortunate position here. And I would just want to give shout-out to staff for hitting the street early with the tenders in a competitive market. And I think overall, we have come under budget and we're looking forward to a successful construction season in the, in the, in this program. If council doesn't endorse that, that is contained in one of the recommendations. It's the third one, to authorize the remaining levy to be allocated. And later on in the report, we are asking that that be allocated to Pine Creek to move that forward. We, we do have an interesting process here in that we are asking council to award this to the lowest compliant bidder. There was a bid lower than this by about $31,000, however, it was not compliant with the tender documents. So this is, we are asking that council endorse staff's recommendation to award to Aquitex Solutions Incorporated at a total cost of just under $751,000 after HST rebate and to retain GM Blue Plan Engineering to carry out the contract and post-construction services, which is just north of $50,000. And I think, I think with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Is there any questions from council? Counselor Cadeau.
Thanks, Chair. To you, to, it has been a long night. Through you, to Director Pupay. Can you provide some clarity as to why the lowest bid was excluded?
Yeah, I would ask that we would move into a closed session. If council wants to find out further details about that, we would say in, in open right now that they were not compliant with the, the tender call. But I'm happy to do that if council wishes to go into close.
Satisfied for right now, thanks.
All right, is there any other questions regarding this? Seeing none. Counselor Schwint?
I don't want to hold the meeting up. I think at a future closed session, we should have an update on staff on what is compliant, what is non-compliants and tenders, so we can kind of understand the range of issues you've been seeing and why this happened.
Yeah, through, through Chair Grant, what I would say to council is it can be varied given what the tender call is. SIPP is specific. And there were specific requirements that were needed to be met, probably more specific than some of the other tenders. But we do vet this all through, through our consultant, through our legal as well. So we believe that we are taking a risk adverse position by doing it this way. But absolutely, if council wants to, and, and I don't think it would take long if we wanted to move into close, we'd be, I'd be comfortable to do that. And certainly we could come back later and provide counsel with some of the challenges that we, we see at times and some of the things that we face.
Thank you. Is there a desire from council to move into close? Another time, okay. So seeing that, is there any further questions to this? Seeing none, there is a recommendation in the report, is there anyone willing to move it? Moved by Counselor Cadeau, seconded by Counselor Burgess, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
This brings us to our other business. Counselor Bryant sits on the Heritage Committee and I believe you have a memo you'd like to bring forward.
Thank you, I do. The Woolwich Heritage Committee is requesting council pass a motion to advocate the province to extend the deadline for removing our listed properties from the municipal heritage register from the January 2025 deadline to January of 2030. The reason for this is right now with Bill 23, the Bill to Build More Homes Faster Act, any properties that weren't designated by the end of this year will be removed and we can't relist them for another five years. And due to restraints, both financial and staffing, we can't do it. It just will not get done. So we would like the council to approve this motion and ask the mayor to send a letter off to the province requesting that this deadline be extended.
Thank you, Counselor Bryant. Is there any discussion or questions regarding this issue, Mayor Shontz?
Thank you, I read this a while ago. Okay, see it now, 13 properties?
Yes, yeah, there's not a lot of them. But if we don't extend this, then we, we will not have the ability to put them back on for five years. And that way, if anything happens to them, we can't even delay destruction of the buildings anymore.
Counselor Schwint.
How many will be done by January 1st, 2025?
Sorry, how many?
How many will be done?
We're aiming for two this year, or one, one actually this year. So we'll see how we go because it's funding, funding and financial staffing restraints as well.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, the committee has requested that council pass the motion that was in the agenda. Is there anyone willing to move and second that?
I'll move it.
Moved by Counselor Bryant, is, do I have a second or?
Nobody.
Counselor Cadeau, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Right, so this brings us to the outstanding activity list. Is there any discussion on the outstanding activity list that council would like to have? Seeing none, that does bring us to the end of our committee of the whole meeting. Is there anyone willing to move and second an adjournment? Moved by Counselor Cadeau, seconded by Counselor Burgess, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. We will now move into a short special council meeting for some further businesses evening and I will hand chair over to Mayor Shontz for the remainder.
Thank you, this should be quick. First of all, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest for the council meeting? We need a motion that the summary of recommendations of the committee of the whole dated April 9th, 2024 be adopted and that is the appointments to the Technical Remediation Advisory Committee for 2024 to 2027. Clerk, should I read them? Yes. I won't, yeah. Brian Broomefield, Susan Bryant, Linda Dixon, Eric Hodgens, David Hoffbauer, Ryan Proster and Sebastian Siebel-Acklenbach. And also appoints Counselor Nathan Cadeau and Counselor Eric Schwint to track until the expiration of the term of council that appointed them and appoints Tiffany Svenson as an independent third. and appoints Tiffany Svenson as an independent third-party technical expert, a non-voting member for track until the expiration of the term of council that appointed her or until successors are appointed, as long as she continues to be a qualified member of the committee. Is there a mover and a second or? Counselor Cadeau and Counselor Schwint, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. We need to, uh, move and second the following bylaw in the hands of the clerk that be read a first, second, and third time and finally passed, that it be numbered as bylaw number eighteen dash twenty twenty-four, and that it be signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed with a corporate seal, and that is to confirm all actions and proceedings of council that we just passed. Counselor Bryant and Counselor Grant, all those in favor? And that's carried. And now a motion to adjourn to meet again in regular session on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Moved by Counselor Burgess, seconded by Counselor Grant, all those in favor? And that is carried. So in closing, council would like to thank all who participated, attended, or tuned in to the meeting tonight. So council state, please stay connected on Zoom until the live stream has stopped, and good night.